Hello Lauren, can you hear me alright? Is that a no? I can't. Can you hear me Lauren? Yes, okay, great. I wasn't sure and then could you just speak, say something, rattle off a riddle? So we can test the.
Yeah, sure. Hello, good evening, everybody.
Perfect, perfect, thank you. Mics are on and working.
Well done, but don't brag, it's unbecoming. That's what Nicholas says.
Noted.
Man, people will have trouble hearing me. Try to sweat us out of this one.
My mother used to say, you know, to all of us kids, because we're all, it's a Dawes thing. That we all needed to take voice modulation classes. Instead, I went and worked in theater where it was an accent. There's a limit.
It's not gonna help Nicholas. It's it's. The only reason that thermostat is even there is to mess with people like you.
So you feel you have some guests, but you don't.
You can be like.
Girl is an illusion.
Light hazing.
If no one sees you.
Where nobody's seeing, get naked and come on back in.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Statement for council.
That would be a statement.
Don't give anybody ideas.
Longest sixty seconds of the week.
Is Michael coming back or have we left?
He was coming back, yeah. Done at the, he went down to another meeting, the quarry.
Oh, it's like, not okay, I'm just gonna say that, it's just not okay. Second, right? I've, I've never seen it either, but it's just, I'm just gonna go on the record and say, you should ride with spandex if you want to be that. But naked.
Yeah, yeah.
No, because the first time I heard about it was when somebody had a child. I find extremely inappropriate. I think our society is such a kind of children way too early in general. And.
Not saying that to disagree with.
It was probably.
And how long is that one scheduled for next?
It's one and a half hours.
Gotta be, gotta be careful.
Just go straight.
Alright, it is seven o'clock and I'll call this Berry City Council meeting to order on this Tuesday, December sixth, twenty twenty-two. City Council's president included, Council Lozong, Council Stockwell, Council Wasak, Council Sean Bell and. And also Boot and I think Council Jaring will be joining with us shortly, he was here earlier for an animal control hearing. Staff joining us tonight, we have City Manager Sterling Castro, Clerk Treasure Dawes and. I think that's it. And Dawn. On the hand, welcome everybody. So tonight's agenda is available online, the meeting has been publicly posted, is being recorded and broadcast and subject to Vermont's open meeting law. And the council's rules of procedures which are available online. I'd like to offer a warm welcome to all the guests joining us here in person and those of you online. If you are joining us online, keep in mind that the chat function should only be used for technical issues or difficulties. The city offers online access as a convenience and we will continue the meeting if any technical difficulties occur. If you would like to be recognized, please raise your hand or signal. And and those in the room should come to the front table and speak in the microphone so people online can hear you. I'll call in speakers in order, allowing people who haven't spoken yet to speak first and limiting time if necessary to do the city's business. Please state your name for the record and and definitely one more reminder to speak in the microphone. I want to thank in advance. I want to thank everybody in advance for participating in a civil and respectful manner. If you have any questions about process or procedure, please ask and we will get assorted. That takes us to the next item on the agenda number two adjustments to the agenda, manager Sterling Castro changes.
Thank you, Mayor, no changes for me.
And any from members of council? Alright, hearing and seeing none, that takes us to visitors and communication, this is an opportunity to speak to an item or a matter that is not on the agenda. If you want to speak to an item that is on the agenda, I can call on you when we take up that item of business. Would anybody like to speak under visitors and communication?
Seeing none online.
Alright, hearing and seeing none, that takes us to item four, the consent agenda. We have a couple items on here, approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of November not twenty ninth, twenty twenty-two. We have approval of the city warrants from the week Wednesday, December seventh, twenty twenty-two. Clerk's offices, clerk's office licenses and permits.
Nothing yet.
Nothing yet, okay. And appointment of the manager as an authorized representative for the Clean Water State Revolving Fund and the drinking water. Does the S stand for state revolving fund, okay? And then authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support for a. For resource for USDA application that they're putting in. Would any members of council like to pull an item from the consent agenda or? Or move approval?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Council Wasak, second by Council Stockwell, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, that all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the guys have it, the consent agenda is adopted also in the warrants. And that takes us to the U City Clerk Treasurers Report.
Hello.
Oh, well.
Um, three quick things, I I said when asked under the consent agenda that I don't have any licenses or permits yet. We are entering into the annual renewal phase. License applications were mailed out to all license holders about a month ago and have started coming in. I am coordinating with the fire department and the police department for the various department approvals. That need to be in place before they come to council, so they will start coming into council in the not too distant future. The water and sewer bills went out in the mail last week, so everybody who gets one, yay. They need to be paid by January third. Because December thirty-first is a weekend, January first is the holiday. January second is the city's holiday because it's the Monday after the Sunday. So the first business day that you'll be able to make the payments is January third, so that's the due date for water and sewer bills. And lastly, believe it or not, even though we are less than a month since our last elections. We've, I've already been inundated with stuff associated with town meeting. So I have created my typical list of the offices that are up for election. And blanks for nominating petitions, consent to candidate forums and information for candidates. It's all posted under the election section of the city website. Or people can call me with any questions. That's it.
Thank you, are there any questions for the Clerk Treasure? Hearing and seeing none, that takes us to liquor control and cannabis control board, I think we don't have any items, right?
Nope, nothing at the moment.
So the city manager.
Thanks, Mayor, just a couple updates, another ARP update, just a reminder to our community. This is the last week to complete the survey, we've had, it's live until Friday, December ninth, so there's three more days to respond. We've had two hundred ninety-six responses as of this morning. So it's a trickle, an uptick since last time, but I want to keep getting as many people responding as possible. And just a reminder that after the survey closes, we'll be compiling the results. Writing up the the results of the forum, the feedback received at the forum last month. And presenting that to council as we move forward with the determining the use of ARPA funding, so. It's on our website, it's right on the banner, it's easy to find, it's also available, you can download it, print it, drop it off to my assistant Roxanna, she'll input it for you if you prefer to do it that way. But lots of way to, lots of ways to to get your feedback in. Strategic planning update, there's an update to the council that our internal processes have been completed with our reviews, had some good conversations with members of the council. And so the next step is we'll be coming back to you in the next couple of weeks to to talk about that as a as a body. And so just an update there and in the next couple of weeks, you can expect to see it on the council agenda. FY twenty-four budget process update, so the twentieth looking to move our council meeting to Alumni Hall. So that we'll, we will have done all of our budget reviews, all of our departments have already presented tonight, you'll hear from three of our partners to to hear the last piece of the budget. And would like to have our, you know, replicate the the budget workshop as much as possible, which I understood happened at Alumni Hall. We'll set up, Don will have the computer plugged in, we'll have the spreadsheet on the screen. And get a little bit earlier start so that we can work through our budget, but do it on a on a Tuesday night. And at Alumni Hall, we can have more room if needed and we have the the technology to a little bit, little bit bigger screen, easier to see the the budget that we're working through, so. That'll be the twentieth after we've heard from our partners today with the last piece of the budget and give me and Don some time to to get ready for that that meeting. And then speaking of Don, really happy to announce at here at council the appointment of Don as our assistant city manager effective yesterday. So Don. You know, huge, a big part, big member of the team. We really, I come from finance background and she obviously been doing our finance and so we speak the same language, been a great partner as we've gotten this budget going. And I think she'll be an integral part of the team, allowing me to shed some of those day-to-day duties to her. And allow me to concentrate on some other operations of the city. So in addition to that, she's gonna be looking at her contracting procurement, our capital improvement plan monitoring. Or some insurance administration and other special projects as a sign which I'm, the special projects are probably the part have her most worry, but otherwise really excited. To announce Don as assistant city manager, which she started yesterday, so that's it for me.
Thank you, Manager Sterling Castro and heartfelt congratulations, Assistant City Manager. One on hand.
Thank you very much.
Any questions for the city manager? Alright, that takes us to, we don't have any unfinished business, so the first item of our new business, the housing needs assessment for Berry City, we have a presentation from the Chair. Of the Housing Task Force, David Sickel, welcome, it's good to see you, David, how have you been?
Been good. Busy. For the record, I'm David Sickel and I am here as the Chair of the All In For Berry Housing Task Force. So thank you for the opportunity to meet with you this evening. As you know, the All In For Berry Housing Task Force has been discussing housing needs since the All In For Berry process, which was last fall. And one of our projects was to prepare a housing needs assessment. And I'm pleased to provide that a brief overview of that report and the full report is in your packets, so anybody can see it online and and so on. I thought I would start with a overview of the community and its housing stock. The city of Berry is a relatively low income community. The median income in Berry is sixty-one point five percent of the state average. A high percentage of city residents are renters, fifty-three percent of Berry households are renters compared to twenty-nine percent statewide. And that percentage in Washington County is also twenty-nine percent renters, seventy-one percent homeowners. Home prices and rental rates in the city are significantly lower than those in the rest of Washington County. Median primary home prices in Berry City in twenty twenty were about one-third less than the statewide median home price. In spite of that, forty-four percent of the city's residents pay more than thirty percent of their household incomes towards housing costs. Twenty percent of the households in Berry pay more than fifty percent of household income towards housing costs. And that thirty percent is, that's probably gone up. Because of the price of homes, rents going up and in general inflation. It's important to understand that households are considered housing challenged if they spend more than thirty percent of their household income. On on housing costs, so it's pretty significant number. Rental vacancy rates in Berry are very low, I've heard some people say they're as low as half a percent, which is almost unheard of. And the housing stock in Berry is old and is often in need of significant and extensive improvement to meet current codes. Almost fifty percent of Berry houses in Berry City were built before nineteen thirty-nine. And some houses are not currently habitable. I make a habit of looking at real estate listings pretty regularly and there are a lot of handyman specials. Or houses that note that they are not eligible for financing. What that means is they're not habitable. So now some observations about. About the housing needs in Berry. While Berry's population and a number of households has shrunk a bit, there is a severe shortage of housing. There is a lack of new housing development. It appears that the private market alone will not be able to address the issue. Believe zoning ordinances related to housing need to be reviewed and updated. And finally, the housing shortage is creating problems for employers and it will inhibit job creation. So there's a broad need for housing in Berry of all types and not only Berry, but the wider area in general. The cost of new construction and significant house renovations is high and that may discourage new construction and housing stock upgrades. There's no single solution to the housing shortage, it will need a wide range of short and long-term projects and programs that will require. Involvement and contributions from local, state and federal governments. Working with nonprofit agencies, private homeowners, developers, volunteers, tenants and landlords. The Housing Task Force established six goals along with suggested actions to improve the housing situation. In Berry, I wasn't going to go into all the actions, but I thought I would walk through the goals and then be open for questions. A goal one is provide timely and ongoing support for the homeless of Berry in Berry. Goal two is to increase the number of accessory dwelling units in owner occupied buildings. Goal three, improve the value, energy efficiency and safety of Berry's existing single-family homes. Goal four, to build more housing of all types in Berry. Goal five, to increase the percentage of owner occupied homes. And finally, goal six, to increase the number of rental units. So I'm pretty sure I'm under ten minutes. And I would be glad to answer any questions or discuss as you might wish.
First, I think let's begin with a big thank you for all the work that went into this report. And and I know a lot of deliberation and discussion with a team of, a team of people who are really committed. Moving the, moving the needle in Berry City on this issue, so thank you, David. Council Wasak.
Yes, thank you, David, thank you to the whole group and the other thing I really like about this is not only like. Each goal has more than one action that you can take, you know, because sometimes we have one goal and one action and that action doesn't work and then we get discouraged and the whole goal falls apart, so. I like that you gave us a lot of different avenues to go down and I understand that you purposely didn't go into a ton of detail in your presentation, but I do want to ask one. In the weeds question, one of the recommended actions would be to review and update our zoning. And I agree that zoning can sometimes be a annoying hindrance to certain projects getting done, so what were some of the updates that the group identified is?
Well, I, this group hasn't gone into great detail, but I also am on a planning commission, so I have gone into great detail and. And currently, the city has a grant application for funding to hire a consultant to do a pretty comprehensive overview and. Overhaul of the zoning ordinance as it relates. Particularly as it relates to housing, but I can give you a few examples, there is, there's, I think it's come to the city council or may have gone through, I'm not sure. About accessory dwelling units and bringing the Berry City zoning ordinance into compliance with some changes in the state law. Another example that just kind of jumps out is. In the R four district, which is single family. Single and two-family housing. The minimum lot size is ten thousand square feet, it's quarter acre. But if you want to have a duplex and build new, you need two quarter acre lots. So to build the duplex, you actually need half an acre of land according to the current ordinance because of the density requirements. I don't think anybody necessarily intended that, but that's what it actually says. There are other areas in Berry where there are existing buildings that could have units added. But but because of the density requirements. That can't happen and there, you know, some of those are instances where the footprint of the building would stay exactly the same as it is now. Probably the only change would be some life safety things. So those are, I mean, those are just a couple of of things, I think there's probably a lot more in the weeds, but that's just a couple of examples of the kind of things. That are there and I know that the legislature, when they come into session, is going to be looking at this, these sort of things. And I know there's some legislators looking at, at least introducing legislation that would actually dictate some of those zoning rules.
Thank you, because I I think that, you know, the the council's hands are tied in so many different ways, just by virtue of Dylan's rule and other things that. Zoning is one of the very few things that we can make a motion, vote on a motion, change the rules and literally the next week some new developments could start, so I think that that's, I appreciate that, thank you.
Council Stockwell.
Is that in fact true, consulting laws be changed quickly, I mean, do you find it?
Was only.
It's, well, it's all a relative thing, so. In 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 local government speak, it's relatively quickly, but you know, the Planning Commission has to go through a process of reviewing. But, you know, the planning commission has to go through a process of reviewing zoning, proposing changes of language, having a public hearing. Getting it finalized and then sending it to city council. And city council, I believe, has to have a couple of hearings and then there's a period of time if it's adopted. That things have to wait. So it's not, it's not overnight, but but it's also doesn't have to necessarily take years.
Mayor, if I if I just may, and David, thank you and for council's context, I believe the accessory dwelling unit. Change is on Janet and my radar for. In the within the next month for the first hearing at the council. So thank you. Just just for that full context.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions for David?
You just a couple.
Counselor Wazak.
First of all, thanks, David. A lot of very good information here, but. You've been doing this for a long time. You've been volunteering the city and I thank you for that for a very long time. What? What do you see? So let's have a conversation about what the solution might look like. What do you think?
Well, I think I think there's going to be a number of them. I think there's potential for new housing development and you may hear more about that now from B A C D C tonight. But I think some of the zoning sorts of things are keeping keeping. Land property owners from. Maybe adding some units short term. Because the zoning doesn't allow it, even though it doesn't change the. Doesn't change the footprint of the building. It doesn't, all the other parking requirements and all can be met. It's. It's strictly density, which would either require a change in the zoning district. Or some kind of change in how density is addressed with, I think that's an example of of low hanging fruit. There are parts of Berry where the zoning. Many of the lots that exist wouldn't meet the current zoning requirements and other things to look at. So I think I think that there's going to be a bunch of different things. I think, I think. Probably this area could do a better job of of promoting the state's. Grant program for landlords to improve their properties. I think it's up to thirty or fifty thousand dollars. If they can get per unit or affordable housing to bring things up to code. I think it could be better promoted, but I think one of the challenges of that is that. This the grant money comes at the end of the process. So the property owner or landlord has to put in all the money. Do all the work before they can get reimbursed for it. That might be an opportunity, for example, for revolving loan fund to. Fund that money upfront and then get it back. And it there might even be a good mechanism for that, because Downstreet Housing administers the state program. If they administered a revolving loan fund, they could be pretty certain they're getting the money back. Because the grant money would come back to them. So that's, those are just a couple of examples, but I think it's just going to be a lot of different things. And you know, there are some things where there's a potential for a lot of new housing units. In a new development that takes years. To come to fruition, but I think there's also some opportunities for more low hanging fruit. That could add a few units here or there. There's just a lot of things that could be.
And you you gave us some really good information here, but do you think there would be some benefit to drilling down a bit? You know, when you talk about per capita, if you look at the flip side of that, on a per capita basis. Berry has much more subsidized housing than other communities in Washington County. So is I guess my question would be, is that skewing? The numbers, you know, when you look at per capita income. So do we know how many of those folks are homeowners? Versus renters, how many are in subsidized housing? You know, so I look at those numbers and then when I look at elderly elderly citizens, I absolutely agree. That there's not really a suitable place for, you know, folks want to age in place in their home or in a home. And an apartment could be a home, a senior complex could be a home, but those have changed over the years. So do you think there'd be benefit to understanding? You know, my mom is one of them. She lives in a larger home, but it's now sadly, it's just mom and but that's her home. And she has no, she's not coming to live with me. She wouldn't do it. I'd love to have her, but if you ain't doing it. You know, but is there benefit to drilling down into those numbers a bit, maybe taking, asking folks, seniors, if they would be willing to confidentially? Participate in a poll and and just ask that question. Do you live in a two or three bedroom home? That really is much too big for you, but but you don't feel that there's an alternative. And if there was one. Would you take advantage of that? Because you know, that would be. Really an easy way to free up housing stock if seniors. It's a lot easier to build, you know, multifamily units or a senior type housing environment than it is to build tract housing. And I'll follow up on that in a minute, but I'd like to hear what you have to think.
I think I think there's a lot of value to drilling down. And this was information that we gathered that's generally just available. Certainly many communities hire consultants to do that drilling down and, you know, with more expertise than a late. Group would have. So I think there there might be value to understanding it better. In terms of the median income in Berry and the amount of assisted housing. I don't know which comes first, the chicken or the egg, but there's clearly, you know, it's connected.
Sure. And and then lastly, have you spoken to any, so I've spoken to a lot of contractors, you know, how how do we pull this off? And universal universally, they all talk about scale. That, you know, the one offs where you look at lots in the city, you know, there's a lot here, there's a lot there and you can develop housing on that. What they all talk about is scale and the importance of it. You know, if you look at post World War Two, when all around the country, we built tract housing. And. Some folks like it, some folks don't. They were fairly identical. But the point was that it was extremely efficient, that most of the houses, while they had. You know, different sort of accessories, most of the houses were the same. And when I talked to builders and say, well, how do we do? How are we going to pull it off in the state of Vermont? They all talk about scale. They all talk about the importance of minimum a fifty unit. Development that will allow, whether it's the folks putting in the foundations or the electrical or the plumbing. It'll allow it to scale. And with that scale comes obviously buying power. So do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think there's potential personally in in again, maybe you'll hear more about some ideas. That are working on, but I think they're going to be involved. Private contractors are going to involve public sector. They might and grant money. State and federal grant money. Might involve local employers stepping up and and. Taking a role in in the process to fill the need. So I think there's potential for that. But. The other challenge is anytime you have those sorts of things, the infrastructure accessing those properties can be very expensive. So you know, there, there, there is develop a land in Berry, but to get to it, you need to build roads and have water and sewer. And that's expensive again. And that's where the sort of public private partnership comes to play. That's where perhaps some state or federal money might help. Make that feasible. I hope that's helpful.
No, it is very helpful. Do you do you think that would be an appropriate role? And this may be just your opinion, not necessarily the opinion of the task force, but do you think that would be an appropriate role for the city to somehow? Front fund. Those infrastructure costs and obviously there's got to be a return on investment. You know, in my mind, the return on investment. Is always taking a quarter of an acre of raw land on which the city may collect six or eight hundred dollars in taxes. And turning it into a home on which we're collecting four or six thousand dollars in taxes. So do you see any benefit to the city, assuming, you know, taking an active role in the front funding of those? Infrastructure costs. And one other comment I'll make is I'm just constantly plugging the city of Berry. You know, we have such an advantage in terms of our electrical infrastructure, in terms of our water and sewer infrastructure. You know, we're a manufacturing town and there were much more manufacturers in the city. Just fifty years ago. So in terms of our grid capacity, even in terms of our water and sewer capacity, Bill would have the best numbers. But, you know, we're somewhere around sixty percent built out. So if the city became literally almost fifty percent bigger overnight. We can, we can handle that additional infrastructure. We can handle the water capacity, the sewer capacity. So do you think that might be a role for the city going forward to front fund those?
I mean, I think it absolutely would be. And kind of my vision would be that there might be state or federal grants. I think the city checks off a lot of boxes for these grant programs. So that the city wouldn't have to front the whole amount, but there might be a need for a match. We're filling filling a gap to complete. Complete the whole funding picture. And then obviously the return would be. Property tax revenue.
And I'm going to shut up now because I could go on for half an hour about this. I like working with you, David. You're you're a nice man. You always provide. Good, accurate information. So thanks again, and maybe we can grab lunch again and brainstorm.
Okay, great. I I see a question from Planning Commissioner Rail. Maybe you lowered your hand, Joe.
No, sorry. This is, this is actually Erica Rail. I don't know how to figure out Joe's computer. So this is, I don't know if this is a question or a statement, but I know that. When you're working, you know, with landlords and and homeowners in the city of Berry, one of the things that I'm a little blurry, I'm sorry. That, you know, when when Joe and I moved to Berry, you know, we had very good landlords and the rent was low. That was twenty seven years ago, but one of the things look at is the fact that. Joe and I are moderate income homeowners and nowadays we couldn't afford to buy a home in Berry. And we looked at, you know, some of the nonprofits like Downstreet, our home is a down street house. And with our income now, we couldn't actually, you know, invest in a down street house. And we're very fortunate that that I work for a nonprofit and I I make a median income. And, you know, one of the things we look at is, you know, transportation and. You know, where we build and how how the homeless population, you know, looks at homes. And, you know, when we're looking at building and and, you know. You know, apartments and we have to look at, you know, rent. And is it, you know, feasible for for folks that are moderate income or low income? Can they afford to even rent in Berry? You know, I listened in and, you know, I couldn't. Afford to rent in Berry right now with with my income. And and my husband's income, I couldn't afford to buy a home right now. We have to look at all of those factors. You have to look at transportation costs. And where I live, I couldn't take a bus into work. I just work in Montpelier. Joe works at home. We couldn't, we couldn't do the things we do, go to doctor's appointments, go shopping. Because we don't live next to a bus stop. So we have to look at all those things when we're building. For folks that are low income or moderate income, they people don't have two cars or even one car. You know, living in Berry is very expensive. And so we have to look at those things when we're looking at planning homes for folks. In Berry, do they want to come here? We don't have transportation infrastructure. We might have. Electric, we might have sewage, we might have. X, Y, and Z, but we don't have, you know, transportation, which is what people are very lacking. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. I think I think you will, Counselor Stockwell.
Well, actually, this is sort of a mayor question.
Put me on the spot, huh?
So who would, if we want to get a neighborhood development area designation. Would the city council apply for that?
That could be a staff or developer could could reach out to the the. The department staff. To get that and I and I maybe, and I understand that maybe some, there has been some outreach that's occurred. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Speak a little louder from up there.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I'm sorry. I raised my, I had a cold this week, but David, I just think this report is. It's outstanding. I think it gives us a good snapshot of where we are. Specifically, I I I mean, one thing that I think should gives me a sense of urgency at least is seeing that. Our population is dropping, our households are dropping and our housing production is low. And and that grand list value is what we depend on as counsel those on points out, an empty lot. Brings in less revenue than a full lot, you know, than a lot with a home on it. And and thinking about those investments for long term financial sustainability, you've laid out a great. A great pathway and options as Counselor Wazak has said. For us to think about as we move forward. And I'd love to learn more about the revolving loan fund. It sounds like B A D C has some revolving loan fund, Downstreet may have some revolving loan fund. And I've heard stories of, you know, young home, a young couple buys an older home in Berry City. You noticed, you noted that we have some of the older housing stock. And in the state, I think the second oldest housing stock behind Fairhaven. And young couple buys an old home and then they go get their blower door test for energy efficiency. And then find they need forty thousand dollars of weatherization improvements and maybe they find knob and tube electrical. But yet having having ownership and equity building opportunities seems like something a lot of voters, at least when I was out on Front Porches. A lot of voters support.
And, you know, we don't have many condos in Berry that I'm familiar with. Another kind of option is is duplex housing. Just kind of story from when I bought a first house. My wife and I bought a house that was an old house that had four apartment units in. Because we couldn't afford to buy a single family house, but we could make it work to buy. A multifamily house where we had rental income and some tax benefits. And we're willing to put some work into it. And then when we were ready to sell the house, we had equity to buy a single family house. And, you know, it's different for everybody, but I've heard enough stories like that, that that's how sometimes people get started is is not necessarily buying a. Single family home, but buying buying a duplex or an old house that's got a bunch of apartments. And it's very different being a landlord when you're living there than it is. When you're living, you know, when you're managing properties from afar. Yeah. So I think there's opportunities, but. Maybe people need to know about those opportunities or be educated or be kind of helped along along the steps.
The other thing on the renter side that and and something I really remember from Counselor Wazak sharing his experience as a renter. And getting a surprise very high energy bill. As a renter and not knowing as a consumer what your costs are going to be upfront when you sign that lease. And then landlord's not having a direct incentive to do that weatherization work because they're not paying the heating. Heating bills. And so I think trying to find those pathways to get weatherization is a win for renters and can be a long term. When when for landlords and and I noticed you you mentioned that in the the revolving loan fund portion. And ask a lot of, lot of good questions.
I mean, again, the revolving loan fund is an idea that needs funding. I think there are groups besides the city who have capability to manage revolving loan fund. But it doesn't, it has to start with money in the bank and a set of rules and what your rules are. And and that's where it gets complicated.
Counselor Stockwell.
Do you think there are qualified people with the time to assess the city's housing stock, housing needs and development potential in a more detailed way?
I I don't know. I I I know that there are consultants who do that kind of work. What I don't know is whether their schedules say twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty six. I don't know. But you'd have to start by. You know, finding out and and that might be a function for the city. Might be able to help do that and might, there might be grants available to. You know, to fund it.
Thank you, David. Thank you for your work.
Thanks.
And Tess.
Next up on the agenda, we have FY twenty four budget presentation. For three different organizations, we're going to start with the Berry Area Development Corporation and welcome the new executive director, M A Green.
Hello, thank you for the record. My name is M A Green. I'm the new executive director of Berry Area Development Corporation. Thank you for. The opportunity to present this evening and also for the opportunity to serve the city of Berry. I have a PowerPoint presentation. Will the folks online be able to see that as well?
In a moment, they. There we go. I guess point at me.
When, when, when we need a new slide. Okay, thank you.
Throw something.
So I'll start right in. My presentation this evening is to cover. The good work of B A D C and our intentions for the year ahead and our. Ask of the city council. Very's. Barrier developments benefits to the Berry community. Uh, various uh, barrier developments benefits to the very community uh to date, um, are to nurture, promote, sustain, and implement economic development in the community, both for the city and the town, to coordinate economic development services among various local, state, and federal agencies and organizations that impact economic and housing development in the very community. To collaborate closely with the partnership and other private, not-for-profit government sectors to joint, to provide joint marketing and business recruitment and retention. And to act as a point of contact for information and support regarding economic development in both municipalities. We work to develop uh funding sources and also to assist and sustain housing and businesses in the very community. Next slide. Our goals for fiscal year twenty-four, I'll start with economic strategy and investments fiscal year twenty-four. Uh, will be to develop and work with funding sources to develop, assist, and sustain housing in the very community. Recruitment and relocation of businesses to the very community. Marketing of our community as well, both the city and the town. And an organization of all of the stakeholders through a strategic plan of very area development. Next slide. One of our primary focuses and goals for fiscal year twenty-four will be housing strategy. We were just talking about that with David. Our work will be to work closely with varying funding sources to develop, assist, and sustain housing and businesses in our community. A prioritization of workforce housing developments in collaboration with downtown designated neighborhoods programs, which we've begun outreach for. Downstreet, uh, we've also begun that outreach as well. And other funding sources, including N B R C, V H F A, U S D A Rural Development, and many others. Uh, just last week, uh, we submitted uh proposed development uh for the execution of a project uh, which we are currently calling the Prospect Heights Project Housing Plan, which would include over one hundred housing units ranging from affordable to market rate. Uh, the submission of the proposed project was sent in on November twenty-ninth to the Regional Priorities Committee. Uh, which is the N B R C um Northern Borders Regional Commission. They are in the process of reviewing our submission, our pre-application in conjunction with many other municipals uh from around the area. Next slide. Another one of our major goals in uh fiscal year twenty-four will be the continual recruitment and relocation of small to large-scale businesses to our community. Continued business outreach, continued business assistance, and general resource dissemination. Next slide. Marketing strategies and investments um are a huge piece of our work in the next fiscal year as well. Uh, B A D C's website and promotional videos are top of mind. Uh, we're proposing a general rebranding of Barry Area Development. We're in the process of finalizing the launch of an industrial promotional video to recruit small and large-scale businesses to our community. Uh, continual marketing of Barry Area Development to existing businesses considering expansion and or relocation to our area. And the general marketing of the Barry Community to targeted businesses seeking, again, relocating or expanding here. Next slide. One of our asks this year is for the funding of a key new position, our marketing coordinator. Uh, marketing is key to the success of Barry Area Development. And this position is a key new collaborator. Uh, providing support to the organization during a critical growth period, not just for Barry Area Development, but for our entire community to support housing and development, business and general economic support and development. Uh, this role uh has already uh been working with the organization since June of this year. Uh, working on uh general development, execution of marketing campaigns. Uh, the creation, distribution of varying uh social media blogs uh and other communications, general S E O and website updates, photography, and as a general B A D C ambassador and representative for the community, uh in addition to uh the management fulfillment of printed marketing materials. Next slide, please. Another one of our key goals for fiscal year twenty-four is a strategic plan. An overdue uh gathering of uh all the varying stakeholders in the community. Um, our goal is to be able to afford to retain a consultant to assist us with the development of a five-year, five-to-ten-year plan. Um, and what we are envisioning is launching, reinvigorating some key committee uh key committees to do that, the Wilson Industrial Park Committee, the Barry Town Economic Development Committee, and also the Barry City Economic Development Committee. And um, one of our last slides here is our general ask to the city of Barry uh to support our efforts, which I just reviewed, which are our economic and housing strategy and investments. Our marketing strategies and their investments and our strategic planning. Our general ask from the city for uh fiscal year twenty-four is additional funding of approximately twenty-eight thousand dollars to support uh the key work of my job and our marketing coordinator and to be able to launch a critical and uh very overdue strategic plan for very area development. Few key points uh to make here in our ask in um which is also supported by the materials that you received in your packets um in detail. Um, are a few, just a few differences. One, the addition of the marketing coordinator role, which wasn't considered in last fiscal year's budget. Uh, we are currently running a deficit um with that role, uh but it is critical to the organization. Um, there have been changes considered uh that weren't in last year's budget that now include simple things such as payroll taxes, health insurance, uh D and O, workers' comp, things like that. We wrapped that up into the budget. Those weren't considered last year. Um, and those again are all in in your packet, your supporting materials. Um, next slide, please. Um, this is an overview of um your staff, uh which is myself and Shannon Alexander, and then our executive committee, um several of whom are here with us this evening. And I believe I did that in less than ten minutes, so I would certainly welcome any questions um from all of you, and thank you.
Thank you, Emma. Counselor Stockwell.
Thank you for that presentation. So Prospect Heights, is that the fat two property?
Correct. That is the ten acres up on Prospect Street um between Prospect and Jake Street.
And is that, is that with Downstreet?
So what we have done uh to date is we have applied for a pre-application to be considered for a grant for Northern Borders Regional Commission. Northern Borders Regional Commission essentially, uh should we be considered for a grant would allow for infrastructure uh funding only. That's the first piece of it. Uh, and thanks for that question because there's a lot to it. Um, but really, the the first piece, should this be considered and um something that we can move forward with would be tying into the existing infrastructure that exists already up there at Country Way. Um, the, and this is detailed in your packet as well. Um, but the 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 plans, the drawings that were engineered back in the nineties were approved through a plat, through a subdivision plat that we've confirmed with Janet Shatney is in perpetuity and still valid. Of course, they will need updating, and of course, lots of other permits will need to be considered um in addition to hiring consultants. But that first key piece of drawing down funding for infrastructure, which is approximated at around four million dollars is the key piece. This kind of a project would be certainly a phased approach. Um, and as I mentioned in one of the slides, what we would be envisioning is something that would allow for uh, you know, a phased development that would run from affordable, which would address, you know, the downstreet uh piece, the whole way to market rate. Um, we have been talking quite actively with um our major employer in the area, our largest major employer in the area, C D M C. Meeting with our leadership team uh pretty much on a weekly basis now. Um, leaning their interest in uh potentially acquiring the land. Um, should they acquire the land and should that be something that their board can even consider, and certainly the Green Mountain Care Board as well? Um, that would allow for um a nonprofit to apply for the grant. Um, and could start the process of that development.
And so it's within a half mile of the downtown, right? So it would be possible for it to be have be a neighborhood designation.
It certainly would be, yes. And I've been talking with um folks at the state, Chris Cochrane at the state, about what that process would look like and allowing for that designation to to go up up the hill. Yes.
And maybe it'd improve Prospect Street?
That's okay. It, you know, it would be a multi-year project and certainly many different stakeholders at the table, many different grant considerations um from Downstreet to grants available through community economic development. Um, many of these grants require a match. Um, so certainly, we would be looking, I think, as David mentioned, at potentially different sorts of revolving loan funds, bonds. Um, we're just in the infancy of exploring all this. It's kind of exciting. You know, to be able to submit this and even be considered at the regional level in our conversations with Christie Farnham, who heads up that team for the state. Um, she felt that um if, you know, the right nonprofit entity is at the table, I E an organization like C D M C or another large employer that is nonprofit, it would help to check a lot of the boxes because of where it is located. Um, so that's, that's what we're currently looking at.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for this. Um, couple questions, just I'm looking at the, some of the additional materials that were submitted and looking at the twenty-two, twenty-three budgets um and the twenty-four proposed budget. So just, uh, you mentioned starting a strategic planning process. Um, I see in F Y twenty-three, there's budgeted around sixty-five hundred dollars for that strategic planning process. Was that work that was already underway or planned for this year, or was that like you as the E D moving money around and starting to get this project started this year?
Um, we hadn't done any strategic planning for, we hadn't been planning on or nor have we done any strategic planning this year.
Right.
Um, so our ask of approximately what would amount to around five thousand for fiscal year twenty-four would allow us to consider hiring a consultant to assist with um, with that kind of strategic planning. In terms of organizing our thoughts, talking to the varying stakeholders, the varying different heated committees at the city, at the town, at the Wilson Industrial Park, um, to look at what a five-to-ten-year strategic plan would look like.
Okay, so uh let me, let me ask the question a slightly different way. Um, in the F Y twenty-two actuals for strategic planning, zero dollars. F Y twenty-three budget, strategic planning, sixty-five hundred dollars. F Y twenty-three year to date, seventy-five dollars. So what is that sixty-five hundred dollars being used for now is my question.
We have not used any of that money to date.
Okay. So what's it for?
Um, I would need to, I think, confer with my executive committee as to what the intent was when that was put before the council last year. Um, but we have not used any of that money to date.
Okay.
Maybe another way to ask that question is, uh, what's, what's your cash reserve right now?
Our cash reserve, our operating budget is approximately two hundred thirty thousand dollars.
No, but not, not the operating budget, but like how much money is in the the bank, so to speak. Or you said you're drawing that down to
That's approximately two hundred and thirty.
Okay.
That's separate from the Very Rock Solid Fund, which is a separate fund, and that one's approximately thirty-five thousand dollars as well. I believe all that material is also in your packet.
Okay.
Yep.
Maybe it's two hundred and thirty-six, but around, around two thirty.
Good.
Other questions?
Does that answer your question?
Yes, and actually, I just thought of another one.
Oh, sure.
This will happen a lot, I'm sorry.
No, that's
Um. Just the other thing is whether you had any plans to um ramp up the donation efforts, the seeking donations from the community, you know, I just the the speaking very frankly, the other two organizations who the city funds to this level, the partnership and the Aldrich Library um make significant efforts to do other types of fundraising um to minimize the impact on taxpayers.
Yeah.
So I was just curious whether that was anything. I understand you're new, you can't do everything all at once to completely understand, uh, but whether that is something that was on your radar that you're thinking.
That's a great question. And and certainly, yes, I think there's plenty of opportunities in addition to writing grants and looking at grants for housing developments to be looking and exploring other types of grants which support the organization and our work. Um, whether it be through strategic work or marketing work. You know, I think it's been, uh, I'd have to go back exactly, you know, and look at the records and I'm new, but I think it's been a few years since we've written those kinds of grants that more support the organization versus things within the community. Um, but I think there's opportunities for that, and certainly our grants available for that.
Thank you.
Welcome.
What are questions, Counselor?
I just want to add a co- a comment. Really more of a compliment. Um, a- as your counsel lays on to B A D C. Um, you know, I appreciate your guys' meetings and all the things that you guys talk about. Um, and really just the diligence in which you guys go to make sure the business community is evolving constantly. Um, so I just wanted to make that, you know, make it known that I appreciate the work that you guys are doing. Um, because it really does take an effect on the community.
Thank you.
So I wanted to, you know, speak on behalf of of the, as the council lays on.
Thank you. There's a lot of good work ahead, and I'm I'm really excited to be in this role and to serve. I mean, I'm coming from a different economic development um organization in a different county here in Vermont, and what we did was revitalize the downtown in that town. And um, I think there's so much potential here to do that. Housing aside, which is huge, um, there's lots of opportunity to to help revitalize and bring businesses and businesses that work with the very community and um it's, it's exciting.
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Man, a question is you're thinking about scaling up um marketing, the marketing function of the A D C and building on the fifty thousand dollars that the the voters was two years back. And going into strategic planning, what type of performance metrics are are you thinking about in terms of what are you, what what are you hoping that investment, what would that investment get the taxpayer in Barry City? Um, and how how are you going to measure success?
That's a great question. Um, I mean, I come from a quality background, so certainly looking at metrics is really important to me. I think you know, how we roll out, first of all, how we develop and launch a strategic plan and how that gets rolled out will certainly be measured. Um, our marketing strategies to recruit new businesses, relocate new businesses, help businesses expand is all about the marketing. So, you know, in terms of what we do with our promotional videos and how we market that downstream through varying S E O engines, through our website, through social media, of course, because everything's about social media these days. And paying attention to that stuff is really important. You know, it's not just about a quick little fun post here and there or a smiley face. It's, it's a thoughtful process to execute a uh, a good marketing plan. Um, and I think it's been a few years since Barry Area Development's had the opportunity to do that. Um, and to do it well. Um, and we've crafted a job description and and brought a person on who's very capable of doing that. Um, that isn't, you know, that that without that partnership, I'll say. Um, I don't think we really would be able to to tee ourselves up or just stage for that kind of work. Um, so, but in terms of your question specifically, in terms of performance metrics. Um, you know, I think gauging, you know, the development of, you know, okay, we have to plan. What what are we going to accomplish in one year? Did we accomplish it? Why couldn't we accomplish certain things? What did we have to table? Why? Okay, how do we have, I think that happens with strategic plans. You constantly are kind of having to course correct. Um, I would envision, you know, being able to report out to the council on on our work. Um, measurably, quarterly, um, you know, whatever, whatever your preference would would be.
Has there been any retrospective, like looking back at the past investments and to see that we think this was really effective, this worked or this didn't work? So to inform what the the strategy that you're
Yeah, that's a great question. I have not had the opportunity to do that yet, but certainly, um, I think that's a great plan. Um, I've been in the role just to think five weeks, six weeks maybe, but I think that's a great plan. And I think that there is, you know, a breadth of information from my, both of my predecessors, actually, my three of my predecessors uh and all of their good work that they've done in the community. Um, so certainly looking at you know, that's part of strategic plan as well. Like, what have we done? What did we do well? Where could we have may maybe done things a little bit differently or looked at things differently? Where could we have, you know, collaborated? Who did we need to collaborate with? I mean, that's a whole part of strategic planning to kind of rethink and envision why we're here, why you support us, why you fund us, and why you think this is a value to the community.
That's what's tough.
As Counselor Lozon was pointing out earlier, we have excellent infrastructure, really partly mostly due to Counselor Lozon. We have excellent infrastructure capabilities in the downtown. But when you look at the downtown, what are the things you think it might need or the top two or three things you think it might need for it to be a more welcoming business community?
That's a great question. Um, so when I look at the city of Barry downtown, I think, of course, of Main Street. Um, I, and I immediately think of a lot of the vacancies, a lot of the empty storefronts, uh, the buildings that need refurbishing. Whether it's refurbishing or being torn down. Um, and, you know, staging a plan to tackle that um, in the next five years, I think is completely feasible with the right partnerships and with the right support and with the right grant funding. Um, some of that's already happening. Um, certainly the work that's happening, the Merchant's Bank, Old Merchant's Bank Building is amazing and beautiful. There are new businesses, I mean, A R Market, what, you know, Vermont Salumi has done is amazing. Um, you know, there's other, I could start naming other businesses along along that strip there that have just popped up and are doing well. There's a lot of work to be done though. Um, and that is certainly on my radar of concern. Um, in terms of, you know, how to tackle it and and who to work with to to make sure that Barry is a place, the city of Barry is a place that is desirable. It's a desirable place to come. I mean, I I mean, I, I think immediately of like what St. Albans has done and Virgens and Middle, not Middlebury, but, um, White River Junction. And it took them probably five years to become these destination cities, like Virgens is a place to go now. St. Albans, you can go there, there's a, a vibrant, fun, you know, nightlife places to sit and eat and feel like you can have a nice night out. Um, and I think Berry's on the cusp of that, um, and, and I'm hopeful with your support and with my leadership and of course with my board that, 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 that can be possible.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Other questions, okay.
Thanks Director Green.
Thank you.
Fix us to, uh, our next presentation, which I think is Director Lewis, right? Very partnership.
I don't have to stick around if you don't want to.
But you're more than welcome.
You're more than welcome to stay, but if you wanna run away, you.
I never said that, I enjoy the company. Hi Tracy.
Hi, how are you? Tracy Lewis, Executive Director from the Berry Partnership. So Teddy, we are going to go fast, we've got thirty-something slides, so we're gonna be like this. It's kidding, not that fast. Uh, but the first couple are going to be, um, really quick. So you can go next slide, you want me to say next slide every time?
Or do this.
Yeah. On you. On you, November, December twenty twenty-one, so I'm gonna go real quick with. Oh, there it goes. Um, this was last year, Small Business Saturday, the tree lighting, Mary Berry Holidays and the free parking. Next slide.
We can't write and touch.
And then more holiday stuff, the Christmas for kids, the third annual holiday house decorating. Different activities that were happening in the downtown, next slide, we move into twenty twenty-two, next slide. Um, work-based learning students, uh, Cody, uh, the. Previous director of BADC and I worked with Spalding and we had three wonderful work-based learning students work with us last year. Uh, Zoe Tewksbury actually helped me with the welcome packet, so we'll be talking about that more. And I'm happy to say that I have a new work-based learning student starting tomorrow, a senior from Spalding High School. Uh, Rebecca McKelvey, so she'll be helping me with some planning for the future, next slide. The Berry Bloom, uh, we bring flowers into the downtown every summer. Uh, with the help of the Granite Center Garden Club, Thomas Farm and Garden, and of course, a bunch of businesses that, uh. Take them on and water them all summer long and keep them beautiful, next slide. We celebrated Steve's, um, retirement last year at the meltdown, it was a great, um, celebration. And, um, it was great planning that event, next slide. The partnership also played a role in hiring process, uh, Chief Vale and City Manager Nicholas. Uh, Lindsay Lozier from my board was on, uh, the hiring team for Chief Vale, and I was on. The hiring committee for Nicholas and we. Um, and I believe Lindsay is on the board, um, the hiring committee for the new fire chief. So it's a good, good thing for, to be a part of, next slide. Wednesday's Pearl Street Farmers Market in the summer, this summer was absolutely our best farmers market of all time. Um, we had twenty, um, seasonal vendors, um, some weeks we had twenty-four vendors. And it was great. We might outgrow Pearl Street, um, I'm hoping we can stay there, I love the location, I think it's great, I think being in the downtown is great. And I just love how wonderful our market has, has done and, um. We're putting together a possible winter market in the next couple of months, so stay tuned for information on that, next slide. Heritage Festival was back this year after a two-year hiatus, thanks to COVID nineteen, next slide. You're gonna see some amazing photos here from Shannon Alexander, she makes my job easier with these gorgeous photos. Um, we had a beautiful, um, fire, fire throwing and. Show on Friday night, which was new, um, we had several new things happening and of course our firework display. Um, was another beautiful by North Star, next slide. And of course, we couldn't do it without all of our, um, our sponsors, so city, the town. Um, Downstreet Metro Development, um, we did a lot of fundraising and. It was, it was a great Heritage Festival, I loved it, next slide. Okay, ribbon cuttings, so I don't have my glasses on and even if I did, I couldn't see it. Pearl Street Pizza Grand Opening, Made in Brazil Grand Opening, Nelson A's Hardware Expansion Ribbon Cutting. Um, Gypsy Moth Quilt Shop Grand Opening, Emsley's The Florist, they moved locations. New owners as well, Stones Service Station, the owners previously owned Emsley, sold, then bought Stones. And Richard J. Wabi celebrated their fiftieth year in business here in Berry. And Amy's Armoire Grand Opening, and then of course the Rainbow Bridge Community Center Grand Opening. So these are the ribbon cuttings that we have do- done this, this year so far, next slide. Concerts in Courier Park every Thursday night, uh, we had fourteen of them this year. The weather wasn't always awesome, but we had a great time, next slide. Amazing food vendors, um, just from the ice cream truck to Dougie Fresh being a new. And of course, the Spalding, uh, French Club making their crepes, um, we just had great time every Thursday night. Next slide, our Women's Health and Wellness Expo, uh, this was our first event, uh, this September. We will be doing it again, it was a great event, it will not be on a beautiful fall afternoon. We are going to move it into March when no one is doing anything, but. Other than it being a, a gorgeous day, um, it was a very, very good expo and we are excited to bring that back, next slide. We helped with the chief Doug Brent's retirement and of course, again, Shannon, her amazing photography. Next slide. And then in September, um, the Spalding High School received the Community Navigator, Navigator Grant. Which was to support young females interested in business, finance, investing and marketing. This was an amazing thing that I was a part of, um, there were women in business. Mary Jane Magnin, Hannah Lajeness, Alicia Calcagni, all of women who have grown up in Berry. Possibly moved away, thought they wanted to go somewhere else and then decided to come home and do business here. And Berry live and work here, and so, uh, Michelle LaFrancis put this together. And had all of these women talk to these young, um, hopeful entrepreneurs coming into. And staying in Ben, in Berry when they graduate, so it was a great event, next slide. Some new board members, we've got Alicia Calcagni and Hannah, those were two that I snagged from the previous event. And, um, just excited to work with our new board members, next slide. Halloween in Berry, we had the Halloween Costume Parade, the Business Con, Costume Contest and the Downtown Trick or Treat. And photos. Are, okay, go, sorry, next slide. Um, and then we brought back the employee, uh, appreciation dinner. Do you see that on the corners?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, um.
I get rid?
No. I don't know what that's from. Okay, so the employee appreciation dinner, it was the twenty-fourth an- uh, annual. And, uh, it was the second highest, um, in attendance, we had a great evening. Celebrating business in Berry and all of the employees that helped make the businesses what they are, uh, great night down at the. Elks, again, we celebrated, uh, Richard J. Wabi's fiftieth anniversary, next slide. Granite City Five K, we helped, uh, promote this event. And I swear to God Nicholas was in that top right picture, but he's not there.
Very generous.
No, and I even moved, I was looking earlier and I even moved where the Granite City logo was and you're not behind there, so my bad for you.
I'm way in the back somewhere.
But we helped raise over twenty thousand dollars for the Veterans Place, um, another great event, uh, next slide. The Mary Berry Holiday Craft Fair, this was something that popped up on the radar, I think in September. And, um, we took it over and just go to the next slide, because you'll see the amazing photos. We had eighty vendors, we had record sales, the vendors had record sales, um, past vendors. Um, said that this was the best Saturday they've had here at the auditorium. Amazing crowd on Saturday and still a pretty set, steady stream on Sunday, so it was definitely. Um, to see that after just two months of work, um, and a lot of hours, it was amazing, next slide. And then the Light Up the City for the Mar- Mary Berry Holiday, um, this again was something that was put on my radar in the middle of September. And I put it out to the community, um, early October. And in just twenty-two days, we reached our five thousand dollar goal and was able to receive a, uh, two-to-one match. From the Better Places Program and, uh, next slide. We, um, up in the left hand and top, you can see the work going into it with our volunteers. The Berry City Fire Department did an amazing job in City Hall Park, and then of course, city council and other community members. Um, helped put up the lighted garland on Main Street. So Saturday morning, we had horse around carriage rides, Saturday evening, we had the holiday parade, next slide. And then we had the Light Up the City with Santa and the trees and caroling and hot cocoa. And it was a record crowd and it was amazing. So I want to thank the community and everybody that helped fundraise for this and supported this by volunteering. And, and then just coming to it, because it really made it for a special night, thank you, next slide. We have the holiday free parking going on, stickers are out again, um, helped put up a notice for the winter parking ban. We have the Mary Berry Holidays Punch Card, um, we have handed out over a thousand, I'm picking up a thousand more tomorrow. And, uh, with a purchase of ten dollars or more in a store, you can get a punch or initial, however the store is doing it. Hand in the card that's completely filled and we're giving away weekly drawings of gift certificates and for downtown businesses. And, um, from what I've heard so far, people are loving it and I'm excited to start collecting some punch cards. And then of course, the fourth annual holiday house decorating contest is up and that started, um, on Sunday. We've received six entries so far, so, um, I'm super excited about that. And then something that didn't make this, because I just did it today, the Berry Business Decorating Contest. So downtown businesses are gonna be dark decorating and on Tuesday, the twentieth. If that's correct, the twentieth. Um, is when we will put photos up for people, um, to, to pick and choose. Who has the most Mary Berry holiday spirit for a Berry business, next slide. Coming soon, a resident guide, um, like I said, Zoe Tewksbury, um, I'm my work-based learning student. She helped start this and I've critiqued it and, um, it is coming very soon, I'm, I'm very hopeful. And next slide. Um, just some insights on social media, last year at this time, we were at four thousand seventeen Facebook lights, likes this year. Um, we're up over fifty-one hundred, um, and I thought once we hit five thousand, things would slow down. And it's just kept going and, and it's just great. And then if you can see under the amazing, we reached about forty-five thousand people within the last twenty-eight days on Facebook. Fourteen hundred on Instagram, next slide, because I'm going. Running out of time. Our, our comparisons, revitalizing Waterbury, City of Berry, Montpelier Alive. Um, just a little bit of comparison of our, our social media with theirs, next slide. This was our budget FY, uh, twenty-three. When Nicholas sent us, uh, the email stating that, um, our budget. I am actually not asking for a raise, you know, I put up what normally we get is a three point five. So I just put that, um, just to give you that information, um. But I understand that the budget is tight and, um, I'm fine with level funding, if that's what the city council decides, next slide.
Say that again.
I don't know, I don't know that we've ever heard that.
You ever heard the phrase bidding against yourself?
Yeah, I know. Questions, thank you, Teddy, for clicking so many times. Yeah, your hand was going like.
I was just gonna say, you know. Obviously, you know how I feel about the partnership and, and your work specifically, um, amazing, um, you know, it's. You just do a really fantastic job and I'm a little disappointed the city council does not get to vote on the, uh, businesses, but that's okay.
You can, you can go right on the Berry Partnership page and, and vote just like everybody else does.
That was, uh, that was good. Thank you, Tracy. I, I, you know, seeing the craft fair and, and the, the holiday lighting, that was just amazing.
It, I, yeah, I, I don't want to sit here and, and shoot my own horn, but I have to say, like. The two months of putting both of those events together and they ended up being on the same weekend. And I know that. I'm always hopeful that a, a ton of people will come out and enjoy the things that we do. And when those lights went up and the music started and I got teary. Um, it was, it was just a magical moment, it was a magical night and I love promoting Berry, I love Berry and I love to make people happy. And so it was just perfect.
And I just want to note that those events were not during regular business hours. And that, that also needs to be noted as well. Um, yeah, I, I don't need to, I guess, promote you anywhere, I'm sorry.
Any questions from council?
Just a comment, I mean, you gotta give credit where credit is due, Tracy, and, you know, I've watched you. Over the past few years, really mature in this role. Yeah. Really, you know, work the Rolodex, for those of you who still know what a Rolodex is. Uh, you know, work the contacts and, and you've just really matured in the way that you've, the way that you pull these things off. Um, you, you've just done a fantastic job and I love Berry too, so, uh, you, you know, I can tell, uh, the way. The way you pull off the events, the way you plan the events, the way you execute the events, I could tell you do too, so thank you for that.
Thank you, and, uh, just so you know, I did see your post for the Christmas for kids and online donations are still coming through.
Of course they are.
That's great, we had, we had, uh, one as I was walking in the building tonight, so. Thank you for the donations for the Christmas for kids. Any other questions?
I was, uh, just gonna say, I think goes without saying, um, that, uh, because we've already started to do it between me, you and, and MA. That a lot of the marketing and coordination, and I was glad to hear about marketing from MA, but. The Venn diagram of the people we're trying to reach is, there's a lot of overlap there, so I know, you know, I, I want to make sure that's one of the things I'd like to work on. Is, is making sure that we're all coordinated, because I think we're all trying to get to the same goal. And so really just a comment, because I know we're already starting to do that, um, you know, with, with MA starting recently, so. And then, uh, you were very kind, the, the welcome packet would have been out weeks ago if I'd done my piece, so. Thank you for your patience, I, it will be out soon, as soon as I.
It's not just him, it's not just him.
So, but thank you, it's, it's, I think it's a great, um, it's just a matter of getting to it and looking at it, but it, it would have been out a long time ago if I'd gotten to it, but it's. It, it will be out soon, so.
And it's like, it's, I'm excited for it, um, it has city information, it has town information. It's got things about events and it has a page for BADC for promoting businesses and, and stuff. So, um, I'm excited to, to have it launched very soon.
I've done my review of it and it's great. Carols.
I'm excited, alright. Um, on, on the marketing piece, in terms of like coordination, I did, I think it'd be interesting to see kind of like what the, um. Strategy for like different demographics are, I, my niece was over during Thanksgiving and, you know, she thinks Facebook's for grandmas. And, uh, and they're on, you know. And uh and they're on, you know, they're on other platforms and and I'm just uh just wondering like uh what, you know, what's the strategy for different demographics and.
So we're on uh Facebook and Instagram. Um. We also have a TikTok page because I know the younger kids are watching reels and videos, so definitely. Not um. I'm learning and I'm working on it and uh but yeah, we're 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 trying to delve into to the younger generation as well. Yeah, I know that Facebook is for us old people, but um Instagram is, yeah. Instagram, TikTok.
You were the one that I called for the Instagram and I ended up not doing anything with it. It was just annoying. I said it, but I said the.
Like business? I didn't think so because my daughters have it, but I didn't.
It's a fun little app where they send you a notification and everyone who uses the app a notification at the same time to take a picture immediately. And it's you being real with everybody else because they can see what you can and you take a photo selfie view and then opposing view so they can see everything that you're seeing at the same time.
Our country is doomed.
The Instagram.
He doesn't know.
I do not know.
Well, no, no, this is getting the on day almost a tricky and we have the library.
I just want to give you a big compliment. I've been involved in a lot of the things that you've put on um. And and really, you just go above and beyond between ribbon cuttings, the Heritage Festival, holiday stuff. Um just, you know, keep knocking it out of the park. I know I appreciate it. My family appreciates it. Um as well as the other families that I associate with and know. Um so really just keep bringing that atmosphere and environment. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all set. Thank you, guys.
So that takes us to our uh third budget review and as uh Michael always puts out, you don't have to stick around if you don't want to. But um that takes us to Director Polk of the Aldrich Library.
Good evening. Thanks for having me back. It's nice to talk about my day job. Um not just be here to talk about a special program that we've offered, but what goes on at the library, um all of the hours that were open. Um I did send you guys a couple of things. One is a budget detail narrative. Um and I just want to let everybody know that's just available for reading so you can more wholly understand. Our budget, our budget performance and uh from previous years and our current. Uh budget that we set for FY twenty four. I won't go into detail on that because it is a fourteen page document. But instead, you all have that. I want to encourage you to reach out to me if you have any questions. And for any viewers or participants who are joining us either in the building um. Remotely or who happen to see this afterwards, I will make a point to put our detailed narrative. Up on our website at aldritchpubliclibrary.org so that you can see it as well. Um but I did want to go over the presentation. I have just a five uh slide PowerPoint presentation. I'm happy to share it or Teddy, you might have it and be able to throw it onto the screen.
I just made you the co-host, so you should be able. But if it doesn't work, I'll do it.
All right, perfect. Let me let me share that then. So, okay, so. So is that coming through as a full slide?
Yep.
Awesome. Okay. Um so Aldrich Library, what we do is our mission statement is to inspire the joy of reading. Promote lifelong learning and strengthen community. Um we inspire the joy of reading by providing a collection of over sixty thousand physical titles. And fifty thou or over fifty thousand digital titles that you can access twenty four hours a day, seven days a week on our website. Um it is just worth noting that. We use consortiums and library discounts or educational discounts. Um as well as buying in bulk to acquire those titles. So I think the average discount last time I worked with. By processing librarian is thirty percent off the list price per book. So after we receive them, we're sharing them with the community and that's a discount, but we get an added discount of bringing them to the community in the first place. At a reasonable price, so. And then we additionally offer um. Both new and you know, fan favorite readers advisory tools is what we call them. To help people really connect to books that they love and to kind of expand. Um and I analyze what it is that they love and connect to more so that they can read more. And finally, we promote reading through activities like the Summer Reading Program, Story Walks through Berry and through Berry Town Forest. Storytime Weekly for um early readers and our Authors at Aldrich event, which our last one was just last Wednesday. With uh Andrew Liptak, the author of The History of Cosplay. We promote lifelong learning um by offering, of course, that collection which incorporates nonfiction works into it. But also um twenty computers and three printers. Um so people can access various resources outside of the library. Um. And then we also offer online resources such as World Book. We offer Encyclopedia Britannica through our own library catalog. We offer um genealogy resources, universal class, drivers ed uh driving modules. There's a pretty extensive list of resources you can find uh through our computers or online through our website. And finally, we work with collaborators to bring um. Different subjects of interest like knitting, genealogy, Medicare signup. And tax support to the library as well as designing and offering our own programs like Senior Day. And Full Steam Ahead. Um it's just worth noting when you're talking about Facebook, Twitter, Instagram. The um the one that I found really beneficial to help us connect to teens at the library. Is we actually have our own Discord server, which you can set up various servers and we try to connect to teens who. Want to play Dungeons and Dragons or Magic and kind of keep them in the loop of opportunities in the area as well as when we're offering it at the library. And finally, we strengthen community. Now, this is where. We really try to reach out to diverse populations within our community. You know of the uh welcome and warming program, which is actually happening before we even open at the library. But beyond that, we have spaces throughout the library that are for dedicated use such as quiet rooms. And uh community rooms, we're talking is actually kind of encouraged. As well as rooms specific to age groups. Our teen room is dedicated to kids eighth grade and over. Um there is a library, a collection that people of all ages can access, but we have a dedicated librarian in that space to allow. It to be a a teen space and then in the children's room as well. It's dedicated for children. Um and this is where we find people uh can also find quiet places to study. They can gather um and knit. They can um meet people in the stacks is is how we refer to the opportunity for you to really. Get to know your neighbors and to know um wholly your community when you may not have a chance to see them in other places. So with that, we can go to the next slide. Oh, I guess I don't need to tell you that, do I?
No, I couldn't do it even.
Okay, so uh in addition to providing all of these services. I am very proud to say that we also partner with the city and town to fund these services. Um when I say we, I'm referring to myself and my staff of twelve, my board of trustees. Um a dedicated group of volunteers working with friends of the library and community partners who value the library. Um we we collectively work on fundraisers and um initiatives to bring in. Um about a third of the money that the library uses in our yearly budget. Berry City and Berry Town um also offer beautiful appropriations to help us with that. So for this current fiscal year, uh Berry City has offered two hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and sixty five dollars. Um that's about twenty eight dollars and forty three cents per resident. Berry Town is offering one hundred and ninety two thousand, four hundred and twenty three, which is twenty four dollars and thirty three cents per resident. And then um the library on our end, we are um. We are working to raise and and bring in two hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred dollars. We do that through at the library. We have. Two major uh. Fundraisers, the annual appeal, which you will see very shortly coming out, and the spring fling, which is typically held in April. Uh the Friends of the Library help us with Light Up the Library, which is currently going on. And if you're not aware of that or familiar with it, I encourage you to come and check out. Trees that have been donated by uh local businesses and organizations. Um get inspired for holiday gifting ideas and uh maybe try to win one of them yourself. Um and then we also, the Friends of the Library also holds an auction in late winter and periodic book sales throughout the year. And then finally, on the community level, we um are. Very grateful to Rotary. They bring a summer uh breakfast during our Heritage Days Festival. And um we offer our lawn and it's a fantastic event if you haven't been to it yet. Um but they also then. Invite people to come and have breakfast and the proceeds from that go to support the library. Um finally, people in the area who have passed on and maybe um donated part of their estate to the library. Uh we're very grateful for that, but we can't always budget for that and we want to see that continually support the library. So those uh estate donations are invested and four percent of that returns to us to supplement the budget every year. So um what we need um for the budget moving forward in FY twenty twenty four, we uh. And when I say we, this time I'm referring to my uh my board treasurer, David Sickle, Nancy Pope and. Um and myself, we're the finance committee. We worked pretty hard on the budget. Um there were four uh factors kind of driving um our budget increases. First was insurance. Second was the cost of heat. Uh the third was service contracts. We didn't have. Um consistent maintenance for items like our roof and our boiler, so we've turned to New England Air. Systems and rod roofing to come in and help us maintain those so we can um extend the life and um use of our existing capital. And um finally, there are small budget items that you see for minimal inflation. Um with all of that, we were able to keep our budget down to a seven percent increase, which. Was a a you know, a work of art in and of itself. Um but in that, we are asking the city for two hundred and fifty nine thousand, seven hundred. Um this is equivalent to thirty dollars and seventy cents per person. And as I was preparing this, the FY twenty twenty one statistics were actually just being published by the Vermont Department of Libraries. Uh the average cost per person for libraries serving populations over seven thousand. Is forty dollars and thirty five cents. So we're pretty proud of the fact that um as far as Vermont by Vermont standards. We're a fairly large library. We cert we're fourth largest when it comes to square footage. We are consistently between. Six and nine when it comes to population size and um we're pretty proud that we're able to offer. Our awesome library um with so far below that average, you know, with a almost twenty five percent less than the average. Across the state. And um so with that, I will just open it up for questions and leave you with this wonderful quote from Ann Herbert. Libraries will get you through times of no money better than no money will get you times through or money will get you time through times of no libraries.
Thank you, Director Polk. And I also enjoyed the quote you had in your memo on the from the opening of the Aldrich Library. Um from US District Court Judge Wendell P. Safford, a Berry native.
Yes, that was fantastic.
Yeah. It says, "The ideal librarian is no longer a watchdog suspiciously defending his charge, but a teacher, a helper, a wise judicious counselor. And friend. Books must be where they can be handled by readers without the constant interference of anyone in charge. Or they can be taken down and put back without summoning an intended." So I wonder if his courtroom was that liberal too. Teddy.
Uh yeah, so now I I I now it's my turn to sing some praises. Um yeah, I serve as the council liaison to the Board of Trustees of the Aldrich Library. And um. The quote that we throw around the board and that the staff uses is that the library is the living room of the community. And you know, Lauren, the rest of the board as well and the rest of the staff, but Lauren really takes that mission to heart. And she executes on that mission every day uh that she works at the library. We've heard a lot about um. Folks staying past business hours and showing up before business hours and Lauren does that every week. Um she commands respect of the staff while also knowing that she is a compassionate ear. Uh to lean on. She has the respect of the community while also being firm enough with the community to enforce the rules of the library when needed. Um and I wanted, she mentioned Nancy Pope, our board president is on here, David Tickle, our treasurer. We also have board member Maria Richards on this call. Um who is our newest board member and we are thrilled to have her on the team as well. Um. But I just really want to make sure that everyone understands um. How much the Aldrich Library does for this community. It 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 takes care of our homeless neighbors during the winter. It gives. Students and minors with an unstable family home, a place to be safe for eight hours a day. It gives them a place to be quiet for eight hours a day. It gives them a place uh to access internet. Uh for free. It gives them a place to print school assignments. It gives them school supplies. It gives them. Opportunities to explore technology such as a three D printer. Uh it allows them to come and play video games if they just want to escape for an hour because who doesn't need to escape for an hour every now and then. Um so Lauren and the whole staff uh really live the mission of the library every day. And put their whole selves into it. Uh and it it becomes both a job and a way of life. Working at the Aldrich Library and I think that is something that we are just all really need to understand and appreciate. And now I'll get off my soapbox.
Thank you, Councilor. Other questions?
Uh so I also want to express my appreciation, Lauren. Um you know, you do a lot of amazing things. I know that I've worked a lot with Ian. Uh through my time with Head Start. Um so my question with this budget is. Um why aren't we building a warming shelter into the budget? Can we fill that into the budget so it can be a permanent solution?
Um you are you referring to the library?
Yes.
At the library?
Yes.
Um so I mean that, I think that is a valuable uh goal to have. That's part of the, I mean. Uh serving people who are experiencing homelessness or who are at threat of serving home uh experiencing homelessness is part of that goal and strengthening community. But keeping the budget to seven percent and and our our initial goal was to keep it at a five percent increase. We, you know, the the board had asked, can we keep this cap at a five percent increase for our total budget? And uh we put a lot of work into it and came back with with seven because of the uh increasing costs that we see. Um and you may notice that um we have a a contract with our employees. We anticipate salary increases. And yet our overall salaries are actually decreasing in wage or FY twenty three to FY twenty four. So we're actually looking at. We we anticipate we may have to, the personnel committee may have to meet and figure out how we're going to reduce services. Or hours that we're open in order to fit this budget. Um so it's awesome. I love the idea. I would love to grow. I would love to do more uh and be open more. But as it stands right now, I'm trying to preserve the services that we do offer. But I am willing to talk about that if you guys are interested in in expanding the budget.
Can I just one more? Um so in regards to that, saying that the budget is going to increase um seven percent. And yet employees, you know, we're potentially looking at a decrease in service. How was like?
So not, it's partially due to the wages thing is due to the fact that we have had, we meaning. The Aldrich Library has had some very senior members who are making a significantly higher wage retire. So that the, you know, the the it a three percent increase to a lower wage employee is still going to be less than. The money that was spent on a senior employee's salary. So that it's it's not that wages are not being cut. Um services are not being. Services are not being cut. It's just the personnel that make up the staff of the library just looks different now.
Sorry, I thought I heard her say that service with services could potentially be cut, that they were going to have to convene a personnel group to potentially cut back on services at the library with a seven percent increase.
Yeah, and we don't know if that's going to look like what we don't know what that's going to look like. But right now, I, you know, let me pull up my, I can look at mine right now. Our our anticipated payroll for payroll expenses for salary and wages for this year is three hundred and eighty five thousand nine fifty. Next year, we're looking at three hundred and fifty four thousand. So we're actually looking at a decrease. We're hoping we can figure out how to do that without cutting, you know, services too dramatically. But we know that our overall budget, the cost of heat is increasing, as I mentioned, those four drivers. Insurance, utilities, service contracts, and inflation are changing the way we're going to have to distribute our budget. And and so we'll we'll be trying to get input on how we can continue the all of the statistics, all of the open hours, all of the program services that we offer with a smaller budget to cover those salaries because more of the budget is it's shifting around.
Other questions for for Lauren?
Hey, Lauren. Thanks again for this, and I I'll say you have two very new happy customers in my house who've found a new series of books about time traveling kids. So
Oh, great. Yeah.
Very happy with that. I have just one question. I can certainly, I'm looking at your overhead maintenance budget line, and I believe me, I can certainly understand the need to not defer maintenance. I mean, as we sit here in an eighty degree room with HVAC. So really, my question is, do you anticipate some of these things are one time expenses to fix some lingering problems that maybe don't occur next year? Or is this like an ongoing line? This is, I know this line is one that particularly grows. And like I said, I can, I can understand why you don't want to defer maintenance on key programs, but if it's one time, you know, I think that helps to know that these are one time capital fixes. So just, that's my question to you.
So we do know that we're going to substantially increase service contracts, and we've seen in increasing service contracts, bringing systems up to up to code, making sure everything is in good working order, and that has increased our maintenance and overhead costs a little bit. I do think that it's kind of a one time cost that falls somewhere between maintenance and capital expense.
Okay. Thank you.
When I recall, maybe it's at some point last year, you reached out to Manager McKenzie to ask if there might be an opportunity to share janitorial services to see if there might be some savings for both organizations. It sounds like that you didn't go that that route that 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 is, could you tell me where that landed?
Yeah, so we've actually done that for both like sidewalk maintenance and for janitorial staffing. And I think in both occasions, the city is fully stacked in a way that they really couldn't add hours to any employees and provide those services. So so we independently hire, we have a a janitorial company that comes in and performs evening services, and we're currently working with a couple of different organizations to offer sidewalk maintenance.
Thank you. Looks like manager.
Yeah, I know, and I wasn't aware of that, but I, Lauren, I'd certainly be interested in talking about sharing those services because we we certainly, I I know we can't manage that within house staff, but certainly would be interested in if there's an opportunity to share that cost. It helps both entities. So let's let's talk about that offline. I think that'd be great if we can, if it works.
I see Bern Bern Bernadette Rose, you have your hand up?
Hi, yes. Thanks, Lauren. I appreciate everything you do with the library so much. One of the programs that I know happens is there are a lot of elders who can't get into the library, and there are volunteers that work with the librarians to provide books to those people at home. I've seen them showing up at different homes in the in the book bags, and I I think that's such a great program. I also have some young friends who go to the library to use the after school programs to play a game, to hang out with a friend. And also the story hours with Ian, and then the the open teen teen room is such an asset for a city that struggles with wanting to have a teen center. The library isn't a teen center, but it does offer so many great after school programs and evening programs for the young teens in our community. And I just want to give you a shout out and kudos to all the librarians. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we do have phenomenal librarians, and I think the list of services that you can find in a library and Aldrich is is definitely an exemplary library for that are innumerable. So if all you need is is to be interested and come, and you're going to find something new that you'll hopefully follow up with. So.
Are there any other questions for Lauren? Counselor Stockwell?
Just a comment. I'm just, one of the things I'm proudest about is Berry City's really beautiful and wonderful library and all that it does. Thank you.
Counselor Lozon?
Thank you. Likewise, Lauren, you're doing a great job, and and I appreciate the transparency. We've had issues with this in the past. I appreciate the transparency of actually putting the value of your investment accounts in the budget packet so that we can get a good picture of that. But I noticed you're transferring roughly three point seven percent of the market value of those accounts back into the budget. Does that three point seven percent represent what the investments are currently earning, or is there a different strategy there?
You. So we use three percent of, I'm sorry, four percent of a three year rolling average. But we only do that for our donor or our donor designated or our board designated accounts. So you'll notice, for example, our total market value, I think you're you're getting the number three point seven from the total. But there is, for example, the Dawn Allen Restricted Fund. Dawn Allen was a huge library fan, and we're so grateful that he donated, you know, a substantial amount of money to the library for us to use. But it is restricted, and there's a quote, "It's restricted to the use of the heritage and history of Central Vermont with emphasis on granite, architecture, and gardening." So there's some pretty specific restrictions there, and as a result, we haven't touched that funding. The the stuff that is not so significantly restricted, we are using at a four percent on a three year rolling average.
So you haven't touched those funds because you can't or you don't feel you you should?
Well.
Limited to Corpus, or is it limited to?
I would have to double check on that. I think it's restricted as to income. And then that's the restriction. And we have, we have conferred with a lawyer. And we we meet with the board regularly and talk to, I meet with the board regularly and talk about here's the status of the investments. Here's what might be applicable for use in these investments, but we're being very careful with it because we know that there are restrictions. And we want to honor those restrictions. I mean, that it's it's an amazing amount of trust that Mr. Allen had to give us that. And once we can figure out a way to help use that money to support the library's mission, once we kind of narrow that down and know how to use it, I mean, Mr. Allen's money will hopefully be supporting the library for another hundred years. That's that's awesome. And so we we do pay attention to that with our donors. There's another investment account. It's the restricted fund that's primarily people who have given money for specific books. And so again, we we honor how that money, when it comes to us from investment transfers to ensure that and that it goes towards the expenses that our donors have asked. And hopefully that, you know, instills trust in those people, and and we'll see more people try to put money towards the continuing operations of the library in that way.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions for Lauren, I think that'll, that wraps up our our budget discussions. Manager Jrola Castro, in terms of next steps. It's just that we're going to be looking at this with the suite of all the entire city budget.
That's right.
On the twentieth, right?
Yeah, that's that's right. And I think just I had mentioned this to counsel in the counsel packet you got for tonight's meeting, but the budget that Dawn and I have been presenting to you thus far, and Dawn and myself and all the other department heads all together. Those numbers included just flat lines for these partners, and that was just our starting point. The point was for the partners to come in and make their pitches to you. I think we'll have something, we now have something to react to, but I just do want to be clear that, you know, increases here as as worthy as they are, will will have an impact on that. And looking at Donald, we're at four point nine five percent now with all the changes we've talked about since we began this process. So that just that just bumps it up. So I just want to be transparent about that, but absolutely right, Mayor, that will roll this up into our conversation on the twentieth.
Just one clarifying question on that, Mr. Manager. So are you I'm going to repeat what I think I heard, and then you can tell me if I'm wrong. What I heard was that you had level funded the three organizations as a starting point. That's not necessarily your recommendation as the manager is to level.
Correct.
Starting point. Okay.
Yep, Counselor, was that correct? We'll come back on the twentieth with 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 a recommendation after hearing what we've heard today. Yeah.
Well, thank you, Lauren, for your time and all you do for Berry City. All right, so that takes us to the third item of new business, which is the authorization of a VLCT Community Fund grant application being forwarded to us by the Diversity and Equity Committee. And I think I see Chair Mulveney on the line or?
Yeah, and and if I could just briefly interject, Counselor, you may have seen the grant application form that was included in the packet with all these materials. The amount of the expected grant award did not match the narrative of the grant, and that's that's my fault. We caught a mistake in the math on the narrative. We fixed it there, and I didn't fix it on the application. So the grant application review form should correctly say nine thousand three hundred eighty five as the amount of expected grant award, which would match the the narrative in the grant is correct. So just wanted to clarify that in case folks saw that in.
And so this is a fully funded grant award, no local cash match. There is an in kind.
In kind, right.
Donation, and it would be for training and facilitated group discussions under a series called Let's Talk About Justice, Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging. And with that, I handed over to the chair to explain the proposal or answer, and then answer any questions.
Actually, I believe that Sam was going to introduce the the proposal. Is that true, Sam?
Yes. So we've been in discussion about having a series of conversations because not everyone has the same information, the same perspective, that this would be an easier place for the Berry City community to start and to start with people who are in leadership positions. So this will be a series of conversations just to explore what we know and what we think about equity in the city and the traditional divisions that have existed. And we may or may not get the grant, but as written, it's a grant to have guided conversations that would be facilitated by someone with expertise. Are there things you would like to add to that, Joellen?
Well, I wasn't sure if there was time for this, but I don't have the copies with me here. Would you like to read one or two of the support letters?
Yes, Chris Hennessy's letter is not in the support package, so I thought I would read that into the records. Dear Ms. Brownell, I am writing to offer the full support of the Berry Unified Union School District in the City of Berry's grant application for the Foundation's Equitable and Inclusive Communities Grant sponsored by the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. The project, Let's Talk About Justice, Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging, is clearly aligned with our district's strategic plan goal of equitable access for all, and specifically the objective of closing student learning gaps by addressing poverty, race, and gender learning barriers. This is very exciting and timely work, and we are happy to put our full support behind it. I'd be happy to talk further about how we can participate in and support this project. Please do not hesitate to contact me with any questions you may have.
Thank you, Sam. I'm really here to answer questions. I'm hoping that everyone has actually read the grant and is able to understand its purpose. If that is not so, then I suppose.
I think the expectation is that counselors come prepared for these meetings.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So I I'll entertain any question.
Counselor Wazazak?
I I don't have a question. I just wanted to highlight for the public at home, in addition to Superintendent Hennessy's letter, we also received a letter of support from Brad Vale, Chief of Police for Berry City, and from the Miles Supply Company in Berry City, which is just lovely, and I appreciate that. Thank, because it's always good to, you know, it's Diversity and Equity Committee is charged with addressing diversity and equity issues, but these are full community conversations. And so it's just good to know that when we get an application like this, it's not, I say this very lightly, just the committee, but there's also more community buy in behind that, and that just always makes me excited. So I'd make the, do we need a motion to approve? I think a motion to approve.
I would second it.
There's a motion by Counselor Wazazak, seconded by Counselor Lozon. Is there any further discussion?
I do have one statement. I I did, Joellen, read the, thank you. It was very thorough, and I did read the grant application.
Great, thanks.
I just want to say I hope we can all move forward without personal bias, without preconclusions. And, you know, I see this as a good opportunity for everyone to learn.
Agreed.
Counselor Deering?
So my question is kind of a little concerned with the school districts. Really, here we see that the city and the school would put together potentially and fund and share an equity coordinator or director position if the city were to agree on that.
So let me explain, Councilman Deering. A while ago, I sent to, we sent to you our report of the last two years. I don't know if you've had a chance to read it yet. We haven't had a chance to present it, which we shall do within the next, I'm sure, a couple of months. But in that report, we were very specific about what we thought our needs would be for the future. And that was one of them, was some professional help in terms of a larger perspective of guidance. And in that end, we looked into other communities, and well, mostly it was the Winuski, but other communities that had hired professional equity consultants or professional equity directors. So we realized that would be pretty expensive. And so I knew at the time, because I was the liaison to the school, I knew at the time that in last year's school budget, they had allocated a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for an equity consultant, and I contacted the school and and and, you know, to talk about that, they hadn't actually been able to hire anyone at the time, but it wasn't the budget. So we had a discussion about perhaps sharing one, since that's one of the recommendations we had made in our report. And the reason that it's in the grant is we need to prove to our grantor, potential grantor, our needs, what our needs are, and also how we've been addressing some of those needs, or rather, planning to address them in this particular case. So it's in the grant, not saying that the city is doing it. It's in the grant as a reference to the report that we submitted to the to the council. Does that, does that make sense?
No, it doesn't. I actually did read your report, so I I kind of.
So you know, so you know the genesis of it, then?
No, I do.
Okay, good.
Honestly offended that you not going to go there. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Well, I never know, because I I don't get responses from people directly that, you know, they've even received things. And sometimes I'm not actually, sometimes I'm not successful in sending it because I've made some sort of mistake in the computer tech. So apologies if that offended you. I'm sorry. I'm glad that you're that you're up on things. Thanks.
Counselor Bruton?
Yeah, so so the expectation of this is community members like city councilors to go to this?
Yes, city councilors, people like myself and people on other committees, municipal management, the kind of leadership tier in the community, people who are also vulnerable. um, municipal management, the kind of um, leadership tier in the community, people who are also volunteer leaders.
So the problem that I have with these type of sessions is that you have to go in with the same mindset as the, as the people that are running it. And if you don't, then you're a bad person. Um, and I, and I just think of like the, the section in here that was in the packet where it said Berry City had a difficult time with the issue of whether or not to fly Black, Black Lives Matter flag and dredging up that, that conversation and you know, and I know that it's kind of like, I know she's smiling over there. And it's kind of like a, you know, I know it's a slight jab towards me. Um, maybe not intentional, but certainly know that you can smile all you want, but it's true.
Let's keep this, let's keep this civil.
But no, no, I'm, I'm keeping it civil. I'm keeping it civil. I can be uncivil.
Do, do you want a response, Michael?
Hey, gentlemen. I'm just saying that I was just, I mean, she was agreeing and I was just agreeing with her. But the, the, I'm sorry, what'd you say, Mrs. Mulveney?
I, I just asked if you wanted a response because I, I have one to that. I understand what you're saying and I, and I empathize with you. However, there's two things when you're writing a grant. One is you have to prove that you need it. And so you have to give some evidence, um, short of sending, um, well, we don't have any data on this. So the evidence really is more about what had been actually going on in the community. It was difficult. You have to admit that that was a difficult time. And the reason to raise it in this particular context is A, it fits the topic perfectly and B, it shows our need to actually do something like this. And let me just say something about the, the style of, of uh, of um, presentation that we chose. This work comes from a particular facilitation style developed by Christie Clemens. We are so lucky to get her as the facilitator because she developed this particular style of, of facilitation. And it's a facilitation that she and her colleague um, developed in order to have difficult conversations at the college level. So she's happily, happy to um, kind of translate that for community use, but the way it works is this, it's simply a conversation circle. The people who are there in the room decide what it is and how they're going to approach the topic. So it's entirely um, user-friendly, so to speak. Uh, people are, are going to be discussing things that they want to bring up. So it's not about, it's not a, a typical hardcore equity training where people might, I mean, people might feel that way anyway. I don't know. We, we can't really tell, but it's not designed to call people out or to um, a project, any kind of judgment about the people who are attending. Does, does that make sense, Michael?
It, it does. And, and I understand, I agree with you. It was a difficult time. I mean, I had a sitting counselor at the time basically calling me a racist. And then community members did too. So I get a little triggered over the whole topic. Um, you know, and, and that's just really frustrating for me. Um, I, I, I mean, ultimately it doesn't really matter where we go from here because I'm not voting for it, I guess. Um.
Oh, I'm sorry, because I was hoping you would attend.
Well, that's definitely not going to happen. Um, no offense to you. I, you know, I, I absolutely love you and but anyway, so I'll just, I'll just move on because there's no point.
Counselor Shumbo?
I, um, I would like to believe that a huge part of the goal of this is that we can all start having difficult conversations. And have them in a medium where where hopefully people aren't feeling attacked or that they need to feel triggered because of aspersions that might get cast. So I support this because I think not just in Barry, but I think everywhere we need to have some very difficult conversations and I don't think we can escape them.
Counselor Dearing?
So my first question, well, my question is regarding the compromise of this group that we're trying to put this uh, grant forward. In the application here, it says the program will include a separate group compromise of diversity equi- and equity committee members to assist them in discovering their ideological differences and creating a process to recover when a wide diversity of ideas creates conflict. Who would be that group of individuals? Uh, the separate group of individuals that were looking to um, figure out their ideological differences?
If, if you recall, we made a request at um, a while back for a mediator to help the actual committee.
Right, and that's what this is essentially doing is looking for that mediator for your group.
Correct.
So es- essentially that would sum up this grant application, correct? Is that it's a mediation for the diversity and equity to kind of weed out their ideological differences to be on the same page?
No, no, it's got two parts. One part is the part that involves uh, other leaders in the community. The part, the, the, this, the separated out section for just the committee is to help us uh, communicate. We're still having difficulty communicating. I'm still not hearing from some members. So um, I think that we still need some sort of mediation for, for us to get on to, not for us to think the same way or feel the same way, for us to get on the same page about what our agreements are. We had lost complete track of what, and I thank you very much, counsel, by the way, for the document that you sent to all of, of the committees. Kind of that, that risk, that's committee reset document, because that really was very helpful in terms of getting us back on track. And when we have our meeting on Thursday, we're going to go over that document together so that we can begin the process of kind of recommitting to uh, what we're doing together.
Counselor Stockwell?
I just want to summarize. There are going to be three sessions for community members. Community members who are in, in leadership roles, committee members, maybe some of the city staff, council members. It is a space in which you can talk about what you really think and work through how you might change your perspective. That's really valuable. We don't have enough of that. And that's a place the city needs to be at. We need to agree and we need to un, we maybe not need to agree, but we need to under, be able to understand each other and understand our sources of information and the way we perceive the world. The fourth session is simply for the diversity group to work out some of their, their own issues about how are we working together and how do we see things? So it offers this time to do this. Four sessions. We have a motion and a second. And now there are obviously many issues we could discuss.
Call it.
Second.
Thank you.
That's what I was gonna do.
Uh, there's a motion to end debate. This takes two thirds majority. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No, no, there's one, well, there's only one more person with their hand up. I'd like to, I'd like to be recognized as giving everyone.
So we have a, I, I think we have an adopted motion to approve to end debate. Um, and uh, so.
I, I also have my hand up.
Okay, alright. So the end debate from council, let's take uh, any final public comments and then we'll take the vote.
No, I think, counsel. Calling the question means you have to vote on it. If there's a two thirds majority, that's what the rule is.
Parliamentarian?
Do we have a parliamentarian? Yep. Okay, alright, so. Already passed.
Alright, so there's a mo- there's a motion and a second to approve the grant application. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Right. I'm sorry, I didn't get all the noes. Were there three noes? Oh, thank you.
I support it, but I might have learned something from the folks who wanted to speak, so I don't make decisions based on incomplete information, that's all.
And I'm an aye, so motion passes, so.
No, because it has to get a two thirds.
Oh, no, that was the, for the ending debate. This was for the approval of the grant.
Okay.
Wait, we took the, yeah, we took the vote for the, yeah.
Yeah, alright.
Okay, so that takes us to, uh, so that ends the, the item uh, under our rules of procedure and um, and that takes us to upcoming business. Um. Ooh, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, yeah, and I'll just mention one other thing, Mayor, if I may.
Can I ask one question while the Diversity and Equity Committee is here? We had a brief discussion last week about the ideal program. Is Joel still on or did she?
Yeah, I'm still here. Um, yeah.
Yeah, I noticed that you had Susanna Davis. Um.
Yes.
Have you had any discussion with her about the administration ideal program?
Yes, actually, I've been in touch with their office about that. And four of the, four of us from the city actually attended their um, presentation. And um, if, I think it would be, if you're really interested in this, Tom, I can send you a, a direct email. Um, and we can go back and forth about questions and answers because we did find out a lot about it. Or we can simply put it on the agenda at some point to discuss it because it's, it's a great program. So um, it, it might bear a discussion at some future time.
Okay, thank you. That's all. Thanks, Mayor.
Uh, thanks, Mayor, just um, just an, an update because it might save me an email to Erica if she's still on. But um, I've heard from some committee members uh, from several committees about the conversation we had last week about the reset and many of them want to weigh in on it as we expected. So just for men, you know, a couple of you on the meeting now and we'll certainly get more communications out, but we will, we're definitely working on that. Uh, as I mentioned last week, it's not going to be done in a vacuum. We're going to take feedback. Uh, not sure exactly the format yet, but I just want to let people to know that it's, it's, uh, there will be a chance to opine. Um, and obviously that's still, it will end up being a council decision anyway, so. Um, just that piece. And then Counselor Lowe's on to your point just now on, on ideal. We, I had uh, penciled in the ideal follow-up for, for next week. So if that's a good time for council to talk about it.
Works for the committee. I mean, if they can prepare.
That's right. All.
Oh, yeah, that's fine. Um, I have a lot of material.
Great. So, Jo Ellen, I'll touch base with you about that offline. Um, and we'll, we'll get it on the agenda.
Great. Thank you very much.
Liaison to the VLCT.
Yeah, I knew that.
Okay. Missing out on some good information that I can be giving you, but I'm not putting that.
Yeah, no worries.
So um, eh, eh, next time that we meet, um, I want to make sure that Ellen is able to, able to come to that meeting because actually she knows way more than I do about the relationship with the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. She's been at all their meetings.
So that takes us to roundtable. I'll start with uh, Counselor Dearing.
I will pass.
Counselor Stockwell?
And there's someone there.
Hey. Is, is anyone speaking to an item on upcoming business? And if not, then uh, then I think we're moving on. So. Counselor Stockwell?
I attended the Messiah performance at Berry Opera House and it was a wonderful, wonderful performance. The space looks lovely. And the soprano was really great. I don't know where she's from, but she, obviously local and she was terrific.
Uh, Counselor Shumbo?
I'm gonna pass.
Counselor Lozon?
Uh, thank you. Christmas for kids, you knew this was coming. Uh, I lied on social media. I said it was like nine thousand one hundred. It's more than that. I forgot to add in the donor box. So we're, we're pushing ten thousand dollars on Christmas for kids. So to everyone who, who donated, who um, didn't jerk the wheel to the left or right, resisted the temptation. So that experiment is complete. Uh, but to everyone who donated, thank you. And especially to the folks who would donate and then look at you and say, I wish I could give more. Uh, so thank you for donating what you did because every little bit helped and uh, we're going to make the holidays a lot brighter for hundreds of kids and families. So makes you pretty proud. So to all of you who, who participated, thank you very much. Had a fun afternoon. Except for your annoying Christmas music, Michael, but never mind.
Okay, Counselor Bruton?
Uh, yeah, and of course, it's not done yet. We still get to wrap. Um, which Renita Marshall is uh, going to be working out the details for the wrapping times. Um, yeah, I, it's, it's always a wonderful time to do the coin drop. It's, it's more than it's, it's just, it's always wonderful. And I'm really glad that it wasn't freezing this year. Usually it's freezing, but it was a little wet, but that's okay. I'm okay with that. With that, I will pass.
Counselor Wazak?
I will also pass.
Now, leaves it to me. I, I, I want to say, um, it would, how impressed I was tonight by the opening of Foundation House, uh, Central Vermont's only recovery center for women in recovery with children, uh, to create a space, safe space uh, to get uh, to, to get over substance uh, use disorder, um, recover. And uh, and there was such a great gathering of leaders from across the state to that, tonight at the Alex Lodge. Um, and it's a, it's a wonderful thing that I think the city committed through by providing pass-through funding and being able to say yes um, to an important, uh, to important regional amenities. So really thankful for that. Um, so thankful for all the stuff that our manager is able to move through every day at, uh, uh, I'm in a, at a speed that I'm consistently impressed by. And all the things you're able to keep on top of, because I know it's, it's a tough, it's a very tough job. And uh, and I think this council really made the right decision when we picked you as a city manager. Um, and I'm looking forward to the tough conversations that we're going to have together as a community, not only around diversity and equity issues, but um, uh, but the budget in the coming, uh, coming weeks. It's one of our most important responsibilities. And uh, I know we have some tough decisions to make. Um, and I know just personally, speaking personally about uh, some of the things that uh, related to equity that have, um, that have changed my perspective a little bit was like an email from uh, about the winter parking ban and who it might impact disproportionately, like lower income households or older women. Um, or, and uh, and so that's, uh, I think that's something, those are type of questions I think we can be excited about tackling as a community, just like thinking about the uh, environmental justice issues when the wastewater treatment plant off gases and making sure that that, uh, that neighborhood, um, which has some lower income areas um, doesn't take the brunt of it when higher income areas don't, don't face those same issues. So um, so we can, we can have those tough challenges, those tough conversations. And I know they can be, they're challenging. Um, but I'm thankful that we have the leadership from our committee tonight and moving forward uh, to, to start tackling some of these important, these important issues that affect people's lives here in Berry City. And with that, I'll pass.
I was just going to follow up on your comments about the, the winter parking ban. Um, to let you know that the partner committee, which is monthly, um, has been talking about it. At our most recent meeting, we um, we've come up with a, a plan and are working out the details to maybe do a pilot project um, in a few areas of the community to come up with something that, that uh, that might be something that can be rolled out on a, on a citywide basis to, to try to address some of those issues. So it is something that, that's on our radar and that we're working on.
Well, thank you. Alright, is there a motion to adjourn?
So, second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. We're adjourned at nine fifteen.
Good night, folks.
Thank you, everybody.
Night.
Good night, Jo Ellen and Byrne and Rosemary and Sarah and Carrie and Laurel and Greg and Simon and Dawn and Jackie and the Nelsons.